It's just been in Pin County or something, cause. Well, cause under my. I got you signed in. Okay, and then you're gonna call in from your smartphone? Okay. I like you in, should be coming up. I take the mute button. Yeah. Yeah, you're fine.
Is my audio working okay?
Yep, I can hear you, Lorisie.
Thank you.
I think we're just waiting for Bob. He's joining us by telephone. Cause again, we're still having computer issues. We couldn't get two of them to work, so. Where you see RM, that is actually the mayor he's using Bob's computer. And Bob, like I said, is gonna join us by phone. So I'm just waiting for him to be admitted. And it looks like we have all the council members. I have Lorisie, I have Chris, I have Ann, I have Brian, I have Sherry. The mayor is Robert, and then I have Becky. Like I said, I'm just waiting for Bob to join us.
Are you guys enjoying this cooler weather?
Oh, yes.
It's nice for sleeping.
Yes.
Dawn, can you hear me?
I can, Gerald, thank you.
Okay.
And we have Anna Dean. I'm assuming that is the the newspaper since Craig is delivering, but I'm not positive. Bob, are you in yet? Okay, Bob's informed me he still can't get on through the phone, so he's gonna be listening via Gerald. Okay, so whenever mayor's ready, I believe we have everyone. And if I'm being asked to join the correspondence, is that is there at all questions? Please remember to mute yourself right now, so that way we don't get a lot of feedback. Unless you want to keep things on mute. So I'm gonna mute myself at this time.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 3:08. Roll call, please.
Okay. Councilwoman Ford, can you hear me?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Lorisie.
Present.
Councilwoman Corier.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Laporte. Ann. Hey, it looks.
It looks like she doesn't have her.
She's still muted.
Okay.
I'm here, I'm here, sorry.
That's okay, thanks, Ann. Councilwoman Thatcher.
I'm here.
Thank you, Sherry. And then Councilman Keeney.
Here.
Thank you. And Mayor.
Here.
Hey, I have a foreign present.
Open ceremony, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and all. Moving on, five, public comment on the agenda. At this time, per the administration.
Mayor.
Add to the agenda.
Mayor, can I in walk? We, we skipped over. We skipped over to number four.
I thought that's, okay, I probably said five, but, four, approval of the agenda. At this time, per the administration, I'd like to add to the agenda two items. F being a DDA board approval. And G, agreement extension for the city manager's contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with those additions.
I'll support.
I have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, roll call vote.
Councilwoman Thatcher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corier.
Yes.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilman Saha.
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Number five, public comment on the agenda items.
Hi there. I don't have public comment on the agenda items, but my name's Anna and I work for State Representative Nat Glenn and she wanted me to give a legislative update. Would this be the time?
Um, thank you, Ms. Dean. Um, could we please do that under item seven when we ask for presentation? We didn't have you on the agenda, but we can add that.
Yeah, sorry about that. I don't have the agenda, so I couldn't tell quite where we were at, but yes.
You are fine, thank you though. So the mayor's gonna let finish public comment and go to correspondence and then we'll go to presentation and have you speak. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, on the public comment on the agenda items. I'd like a motion to open the public hearing on the FDCVT grant FY 2020.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on the FDCVT grant year 2020.
I'll support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? With no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilman Saha.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thatcher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
Thank you.
And passed. Number six, the correspondence. You have the letter from the State of Michigan Department of the Treasury. And we're gonna move on to the presentation. I didn't catch the name, but Representative Glenn's office would like to do a presentation with us.
Hi, yes, also my name's Anna and I actually work on Rep Glenn's campaign, but she did want me to come and legislative update. So as far as coronavirus goes, if there's any resources that people still need, unemployment, small business, et cetera, please feel free to reach out to her office and and if you have specific questions, which is stage four, feel free to ask that as well. And then flooding updates, so they're working towards getting an independent investigation. And Governor Whitmer allowed Boise Hydro to kind of hire the quote independent investigators. But both the state and Boise Hydro could be held at fault and both have their own people investigating it. So we need something actually independent. And then Rep Glenn also set up a hero helpers where she had people volunteering in the community, fixing up homes, disseminating resources, et cetera. And then she also secured six million in the House for funding for flood relief. And Senator Stannis will be taking that up soon in the Senate and hopefully it will be on the governor's desk in the near future. And again, we know this is kind of just the start of funding for the floods, but we wanted to get the process rolling. Outside of those two things, some updates legislatively that Rep Glenn has been up to. So one is that she recently testified on behalf of two different laws that protect Michigan children and kind of clarify legal obscurities that were making it difficult to get children that they need, such as updating the definition of the word neglect in state law to ensure that children who are threatened with harm are actually protected. I guess there were several instances where there was necessary court intervention, but it wasn't possible for the children due to the inconsistencies in the state law. So that's one. Another is she also announced that Michigan families who participate in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program are now able to buy their food online from big retailers so that low-income families can be safely getting their groceries. And then she also has been working diligently on the budget, especially because the state is now struggling to balance the budget given the COVID-19 pandemic. And so we'll have a little bit of more updates on the specifics of the budget in the super near future. They've been deliberating on budget pieces for the past couple of weeks and they'll continue to do so for a little bit longer before it's completely finished, but you'll, you'll hear more as that rolls out bill by bill. And then the last thing is that Rep Glenn sponsored a bill called Return to Learn, which provides funding for distance learning and gives teachers hazard pay and overtime pay and encourages distance learning for even instances of like snow days, so that children are staying up to their benchmarks. And then also provides benchmarks assessments to ensure that students aren't falling behind due to distance learning. And then it also requires school districts to work with health departments to establish safety protocol. So what Rep Glenn has been up to in the legislature, if you have any questions, I will be sure to take it down and have someone get back to you.
Okay, I'd like to thank you, Anna, for the update. And please tell Representative Glenn that we appreciated that she wanted to attend her Zoom meeting today. So with that, does any council have any questions for Anna at this time? If not, we'll be moving on. And again, thank you, Anna and Representative Glenn.
Thanks.
Number eight, approval of the consent agenda. I would need a motion and a second for this.
To accept the consent agenda.
I will support.
I believe we have a motion and a support for the consent agenda. Any discussion? With no discussion, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, was I muted?
Yeah.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thatcher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilman Saha.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Yes. The approval of consent agenda is passed. Number nine, committee reports. If you have nothing to report, let's not spend much time here. If you do have something, go ahead.
I will jump down to DDA. Last meeting, first part of March, we had our meeting, but Jeanette Marks did resign from our board. She's librarian, she got a new position in Auburn. And Linda Austin agreed to take her position. So through the recommendation of the DDA board, we recommend Linda Austin to take Jeanette Marks' current term and for her to be appointed by city council. So I make that into a motion to appoint Linda Austin to replace Jeanette Marks' term for her seat on the DDA board.
I will support that.
Brian, did you hear the motion made or you weren't making the motion?
Oh, I explained, I think I made part of the motion at the end there.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to be sure, because otherwise I would make the motion, but it's made and supported.
Okay.
Thank you, Lorisie.
Okay.
I believe we have believe we have a motion to approve Linda Austin to the DDA board. I think we're gonna move on.
Have to have a vote on it.
Down, we're gonna let this, we're gonna let this go, because that's a new business in F and take it back up there with roll call vote and a motion.
I just want to say about
Okay.
recreations. Hello?
I didn't hear what you said.
I just wanted to explain about parks and recreations. We did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did have a meeting before COVID hit. I don't have all my paperwork in front of me, but I do plan on resuming another meeting now that this COVID is over with. Maybe we can get back to business and set up a time, date and time to do a city cleanup and whatever else we need to take care of at that time. So that's all.
Okay, thank you, Lorisie. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to unfinished business. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing on the FDCVT grant for year 2020. I would like a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to close the FDCVT grant for year 2020.
We have a motion and we have support. Is there any discussion on this? With no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Councilwoman Thatcher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corier.
Yes.
Council, Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
Councilman Saha.
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson.
Yes. And that was passed. Unfinished business, A, the volunteer policy. You should have a copy. I would like a motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion to pass the City of Pin County Volunteer Release and Waiver of Liability Policy.
I'll support.
We have a motion in support of the City of Pin County Volunteer Release and waiver of liability. Any discussion? With no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Saha.
Yes.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thatcher.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Volunteer policy is passed. Moving on to new business. Financially distressed city, villages, and township grant. We need a motion and support.
I'm not sure I understand what we're supporting.
We are, we are supporting the adoption of, or the acceptance of the grant and all the requirements outlined in that letter from the state, that we would meet all those obligations.
Okay, I'll support the motion of the, oops, sorry. Of the financial distress cities, village, and township grant.
You're making a motion for that, Lorisie?
Yes.
And I'll support.
Any, we have a motion and we have support. Is there any discussion on this? With no discussion, we need roll call vote.
Okay.
Armie, I can't hear.
Can you hear me? Hello, Councilwoman Corier.
Yes, I can hear you now. I couldn't hear you, Dawn.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I agree tricky with that mute button. Um, Councilwoman Thatcher.
You know.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford. Councilman Saha.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford. Lorisie, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, yes.
Okay, and Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's passed. B, the appointment of Robin Weiss to the Board of Review and the Planning Commission. Again, a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to appoint Robin Weiss to Board of Review and Planning Commission.
I'll support.
We have a motion with support. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Ford. Lorisie, can you hear me?
Oh, I keep hitting the wrong one.
I did the same thing, thank you. Councilwoman Thatcher.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Keeney. Councilman Saha.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corier.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilman Keeney.
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson.
Yes. And that is passed. Number C, the budget amendment. Again, support. Motion and support.
I'd make a motion to support the budget amendments for 2019, 2020 fiscal year. as presented by administration.
I'll support.
We have support. We have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilwoman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coria.
Yes.
Councilman Saha.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bathe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Yes. Budget amendment is passed. Item D, amend NOCS's weed ordinance. Again, I need support. Or a motion and support.
I'll make a motion to amend the NOCS weed ordinance.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support to amend the NOCS's weed ordinance. Discussion?
Yes. I just have a few questions about removal and relocation of debris, junk and other miscellaneous obstructions. So who would be doing the removal and relocation of these items?
It would be a contractor that the city would engage. We usually contract with a lawn service to do that or do any mowing or anything.
Okay, so we're not having our city guy do the mowing anymore?
Correct.
Okay. Um. And what's the fee on that?
So by
I mean, I know it gets Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. So by ordinance, that fees whatever the contractor charges us plus $100 administrative fee. The only thing that is being changed in this ordinance is the date at the post which we went from May 15th to May 1st. And it used to be, it had to be 12 inches in height and we reduced that down to six inches.
Okay.
Everything else is the same as before.
Okay. I guess that was the
Any other discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Bathe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Saha.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coria.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
Thank you.
E, amend the brush policy. Again, need a motion and support.
Uh, just question, what are the amendments? Or is this whole page an amendment?
No, the amendment here is, um, give me a moment, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the moment. So basically, we will not accept bind, rip off and no lock frame.
So seven, seven through nine are new?
Correct.
Okay.
And city manager Mafa is asking me to express that those were recommendations that he came up with in talking with us and experience, his short experience here.
I'll make a motion to amend the City of Pin County brush policy as presented in the as presented at this meeting effective July 2020.
I'll support.
We have a motion with support. Any further discussion?
Yes. I'm just trying to look over to see if I can find my answer first though, but my question, I guess, is, is what if people set brush aside onto the edge where it should be picked up? And it's been there forever. What are we doing about that? What are we going to do? I probably am not making myself very clear.
Well, I, I understand. And Bob is saying that you would meet with him and he would resolve that.
Okay.
Okay, and then my comment isn't, and Dawn, I've been told she's got phone calls because there's a pile down and a couple houses down for me. And I, and the guy called me, he's, he's done it, called you twice. Dawn?
We've received calls, yes, on the water street issue.
Yeah, I would, and it's, it's extended like out on the side of the road now, like you said, and they've had to do it. So would that be one of those that would take care of that situation, this ordinance?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. It says that it'll be May through September, but with COVID that was going on, a lot of services were up for a while. Is that something we can extend into the summer to help some of these people out?
Possibly. We will definitely be looking into that. You know, everything is dependent on the situation with the coronavirus right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coria.
Yes.
Councilwoman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bathe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Saha.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
And I'd just like to take this opportunity to remind you that we only have about five to seven more minutes before we'll reach our 40-minute deadline on this meeting. So we may have to, yeah, and we have two items left.
Okay, brush policy passed. Item F, the DDA Board appointment. I believe we already had a motion and sent to appoint Linda Austin to the DDA Board.
Correct, Mayor. We just need discussion and roll call.
Any discussion? With no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Saha.
Yes.
Councilwoman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bathe.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coria.
Yes.
And Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
Thank you.
That was passed. Item G, the agreement extending city manager's contract. A motion and support?
I'll make a motion to extend Bob Muffet's contract.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support to extend the city manager's contract. Any discussion?
Yes. I know, we only have a few minutes. I know it was discussed that we were going to keep looking. I know with the COVID, we haven't had the opportunity to do any more interviews. I don't know, is this extension for a full year or are we going to continue doing a short term? And not that I don't like Bob, I do. I'm just
I would like to extend it for six months and then decide what we're going to do after that. Maybe the COVID would be to the next phase.
Oh, the, the contract itself, the, the meminist to extend it for a year. So it'll be June 30th, 2021. So this is, this is the agreement presented. Just my, my comment on it is, you know, I think Bob's been doing a fine job finding peeling, peeling away the onions on, on the financial situation of the city, which still is in a dire shape. And we just need a strong person to follow through if we change people coming in to re-educate themselves on, on where we're at with things. Once again, we lose time in that. And at that point in time, you know, a year, year from now, hopefully, we're in a good position. But, you know, right now, from what I'm seeing and with our, our financial reserves down to about 150,000. And the next step for us is going to receivership with the state. We need a person that has a financial know-how to operate the city at this point in time.
Okay, Brian, we run out of minutes, but I'd like to make a motion to extend Bob's contract for one year.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support. Any further com, or discussion? No discussion, uh, roll call vote, please.
We can't hear you, Dawn.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Coria.
Yes.
Councilwoman Keeney.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laporte.
Yes.
Councilwoman Saha.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bathe.
Did you say Bathe?
Yes, I'm sorry, Sherry.
Uh, no.
Councilwoman Ford.
Yes.
Mayor Gibson.
Yes. Contract is passed. Before we move to public comment, I'd like to ask Mr., our city manager, Mr. Muffet, if he would like to add anything or say anything at this point.
I can't hear him.
Can't hear him.
Yeah, I see, I can't hear him neither.
I look forward to working with everyone. And as soon as we can physically sit together and talk about the finances of where we are, I would like to do that. And I'm hoping we can do that here in about eight weeks. Thank you, everyone. Next meeting scheduled July 20th. July 20th, 5 o'clock at the community center is where our next meeting will be. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Any public comment? I myself personally would like to add to public comment. I'm, I'm really happy with the work of our administration and our workers here in this city trying to help us and getting us moved forward, especially in the last four months in this COVID hardship and whatever. It's all new to us and we're trying to do the best, everyone, through the administration, through our workers, through the council and the mayor. We will get through this. I want you to be aware, the COVID cases look like they're rising again. So precaution is the most important thing at this time. We certainly don't need Michigan being in the red again. And it's getting close to us because Ohio turned red this morning. So with that, again, I'm happy and I wanted to give kudos to our workers here in the city and everyone else. And there is some residents out there that also need kudos, that's working with us, especially Robin Weiss for stepping up and taking on some board appointments. Very much appreciative. With that, if any other public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to comment. I've been getting questions. Any joint idea when we're going to get our water meters red? I've got like four or five questions like that already.
If I may answer, we have issues with the equipment that keeps breaking down. We did get our, um, loner today, but we're having the public city man up and running. We did need to keep our new readers, but we're waiting for the upper half of it. We are definitely hoping by next week, I, Bob agreed, I will do overtime to get them done and so contact Tommy, I can see me for overtime, but we are doing our best.
Will they get extended time? You can skip my house, Dawn.
Okay, everyone's telling me that.
So since, so since it's red later, will we be, be extending like the cancellation date then?
No, no, what we're talking, we will be extending the due date until so not to
All right, that will work. That will work.
Okay, we need to adjourn. We're running out of time.
I will adjourn the meeting at 3:46 PM. We need support.
I'll support if anybody hasn't.
All right, we had support and we had a motion to support to adjourn the meeting at, I got 3:50. Thank you, everyone. And we'll get through this.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
All right, thanks, all.
Thank you, everyone.